Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator, controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning. We're going to call today's meeting for Thursday, January 23 to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners Woodin.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Vonck.
Here.
Talan.
Here.
Vice Chair Stuck.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Skaggs.
Here.
Solfeld.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Volkowski.
Present.
Breevy.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have 19 members present, zero absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're on to item three, invocation, and I'll call in Commissioner Morgan.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to introduce our very own Bob Becker. Now, some of us remember Bob as a sports editor for the Grand Rapids Press, but he also has another role. He does a lot of funerals. He's done 1,400 funerals for our veterans. And I asked him to offer the invocation today. He was an E-5 in the Air Force. So it's my pleasure to introduce to you Bob Becker.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm also going to be leading the Pledge of Allegiance, but we'll start with the invocation. Let us pray. Lord God, thank you for every mind and heart that fills this room today. Only you truly know all the things this group can accomplish. They have ideas, visions, hints, opinions, and daily instructions. They have talents, abilities, leanings, and the desire to do good work to benefit the people they serve. But we know, Lord, that only you can see in perfect detail the end of every beginning, the outcome of every project, suggestion, idea, or goal. Strengthen their confidence in who you have made them to be. Encourage them to listen to each other and to share with goodwill each offering so that they might accomplish the task you have set before them. Guard their hearts from pride and selfish ends, and continue to bless them for being generous with their time and talents in order to benefit the rest of us. Bless this meeting today and everyone who's come forward to take part. We ask this in your holy name. Also been asked to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I will tell you that the Honor Guard salutes during the pledge, and I'm asking any veteran here in attendance to join me in doing so, to recognize those who have previously served and to show solidarity with the brothers and sisters who are in uniform today, ever alert and ready to defend the freedoms that make us special. Please help me honor the flag. For veterans and members of law enforcement with us today, hand salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for allowing me the honor of opening today's meeting. When you go through basic training, one thing you learn is that the military, in the military, the salute is always a sign of respect. That being the case, thank you all for your service to our county. Thank you.
I think that was the best pledge we've had here in quite some time, Mr. Becker. Thank you so much. We are on to item five, Special Order of Business, and it will be a presentation on the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority. And I will call it, oh, Commissioner Morgan's there to...
Yeah, I'm here once again, Madam Chair.
I should have known.
Is this your report for today?
Yeah. Is this miscellaneous too?
Yeah, no, I sit on the airport board. I don't know if everybody's aware of that. But it's my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Richardson. And he comes from us, he's been with us about four or five months, give or two, four and a half? Four and a half months. He comes from Columbus, Ohio. Don't hold that against him. He's a pretty, pretty good guy. So I introduce you Tori Richardson.
Appreciate it. Good morning. Thank you for having us down here to give you a little bit of an overview. As Commissioner Morgan said, I'm Tori Richardson, President and CEO of the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority. And we're certainly pleased to have two of our board members, commissioners, here with you. And we certainly also appreciate the fact that you just recently appointed Doug Small to our board, helping us to fill some vacancies. We've still got one more, and I understand that's in the process. But we've got a really good board, and we've got a lot of great things happening at the airport. So we are excited to share some of that with you this morning. The first thing we want to do is share a little bit of our operational statistics. Always good news when we can talk about the air service and what we have to offer, but 35 nonstop destinations. Hopefully, you all have heard in the last week, we've offered up three more routes that are going to start this summer with Allegiant. So we are adding LA, Austin, and Boston to our route map, which are great business markets, but also with Allegiant and the timing of their flights will be great for our leisure traffic as well. So we're very proud of this. We've got great air service and expanding routes as we keep working through. Yearly passengers, again, another statistic we like to share. The point to take away on this, as you can see, we're on that positive upward trend. That's a good reflection of the community. Obviously, the airport is just a reflection of the community, and so we like to see that healthy growth. If you look at that over the past few years, that represents about 50% growth. If you add just a few more years onto that slide just prior to this, we're really up about 85%. So we have seen a very significant increase in the amount of passengers utilizing our facilities, fastest growing in the state of Michigan. We're very happy with that. What does that look like with our airline partners? This pie graph gives you a glimpse of what the market share looks like, so based on the number of passengers. Obviously, Delta, this is a very large Delta market. They take about 35% of the market share. United and American kind of trade off from year to year, who's got the number-two spot there. But you can see American right now at 18 and a half, and United at just about 17%. And then the big takeaway, if you look at that Southwest at 12%, Allegiant at 12 and a half percent, and Frontier at 5%, that's where we've seen most of the change. There's good news with that, and there's some bad news with it. Unfortunately, with Southwest, there's some of the 737 MAX aircraft issues that is limiting their growth. So they are, for the first time in their, in their company's life, actually not growing the way they always have been. So we're seeing a little bit of that at our airport with a little bit of reduction. Fortunately, Frontier and Allegiant have picked up the slack in some of those cases and added new routes and been able to help grow their market share. But we remain concerned and focused on Southwest and what they're going to be able to do in the months to come. Switching to kind of the financial piece a little bit, this next slide gives you a good representation of how we're doing on our financials. Revenue, obviously, very, very strong, 16.6% increase. You can also see expenses went up. In our business, we also have to pay for the services, and lots of times, they both will rise or fall together. Fortunately, they went, the expenses went up just slightly lower, a slower pace, 9.3%, giving us a pretty healthy margin of 24.6. Of course, I think most of you know, and we'll talk about it, that margin goes right back into our capital investment and the programs that we have to do to continue this fantastic growth. That's kind of a segue into our next set of projects that I want to share with you. And feel free to ask questions, or we can wait to the end. But AbFlight, the FBO facility, I'll talk a little bit about that. Our Gateway Transformation Phase II project, our Terminal Apron Reconstruction, which then is a segue into an expansion project, which ultimately gives us to Project Elevate, which is a program you may have heard. And I've got a little bit of a slide presentation at the very end to share with you on that program. The first one is AbFlight, which is our second FBO or fixed base operation. That's the facility that basically takes care of general aviation aircraft, but they can also do ground support, like de-icing and fueling for air carriers as well. It'll be a 5,000-square-foot office building with a 30,000-square-foot hangar, $6 to $7 million investment, 30-plus new jobs for our community. So we're proud to be partnering with them and offering additional competition kind of over on the east side of the facility. A little bit of a screenshot of where they're at with construction right now. So they're continuing, despite the weather, making great progress and hope to open probably the first part of the second quarter, April timeframe. The Gateway Transformation Project is everything that's going on in the terminal right now, really just trying to modernize the facility that we have. So we've worked out in the concourses, we've worked at consolidating the checkpoint. Now, unfortunately, we're right in the middle of everybody's traffic, and that is in the front lobby, the ticket counters, and the baggage claim area. But we're making great progress. This project will wrap up probably around the June timeframe of this year. You can see in the picture here, we're modernizing the ticket counters. Here's a rendering of what the baggage claim will look at. If you go out there any time in the last week or two, you can start to get a glimpse of this, as some of the construction walls have come down, and you can get kind of a visual all the way down the entire front first level and really see how that's really opening up and being modernized. Outside, the Terminal Apron Reconstruction Project has wrapped up. It was a very large project, very complex, because as you can see in the photo here, we are literally tearing out all of the concrete right outside the building, which is where we park the airplanes and service them. So we had to move airplanes around from gate to gate. Unfortunately, that means passengers disrupted a little bit in terms of where they expect to go based on the airline that they fly. But we really worked well with the airlines to make sure that this was as smooth as possible. It did happen over a couple of years. There were a lot of folks involved in this, but we're very pleased that 99% of the materials that were removed from there have been recycled, and it's about 153,000 square yards of new concrete apron. In addition to that, we also are needing to expand our apron area, again, the area that serves the airplane. So when we get into Project Elevate and we talk about a new concourse, this next photo gives you a glimpse of how we're expanding the apron area. And that center section that's asphalt will give you some indication of what the new terminal concourse expansion will look like. That area will be replaced with a building starting later this year. We're in the design phase of that today. You hear us talk a lot about Project Elevate. Really, it's a series of projects. We are very proud. Our, our board is investing $400 million over the next several years, of which the most immediate need will be concourse A expansion and some parking additions that we need to make. That's probably more in the ballpark of about $145 million. But we are always looking at leveraging as much of the federal, state, and local money that we can to invest in these facilities. And so I'll talk a little bit about each one of these here. The Air Traffic Control Tower is a federal facility, so we are working with them to facilitate the relocation of it. It is not one that we plan to actually financially participate in, although we have our challenges with that as well, working with the federal government and the lack of funding there. The Federal Inspection Station, we've been very fortunate to actually receive two $5 million grants. One is sort of in hand, the other one is being worked on as we speak, but one's at the state level, one's at the federal level, again, trying to leverage the funds as best we can. That first $10 million will give us an opportunity to build a little bit more onto the terminal building, adding in a baggage carousel that can be used for both domestic and then in the future, international processing of passengers and bags. So we're able to make some use of that funds, those funds, and actually get a little bit of an expansion project going at the, at the airport as well. And then the concourse A expansion, this is a rendering of what that's going to look like, give you some idea of the size and location, what we anticipate kind of the finishes to be. I won't spend a lot of time on this. We're going to actually go through this in a video at the very end. But in this photo here, if you can see the red, I don't know if this is going to work on this screen, but the red boxed area, that is the existing concourse A as we know it today. You can see the size of it is probably two and a half the times the size it is today, both widening it and extending it. That's going to give us eight additional gates that we can operate with the airlines off of the, the terminal, going to give us a lot more capacity. And this is really kind of the first, next phase of capacity and expansion projects that we're going to be undertaking. This is just a quick rendering again of what it's going to look like inside. So we pride ourselves on being a place of, a sense of place for people coming through here. So the finishes, really modern, open, daylight, giving folks better retail, food and beverage options, able to be more productive while they're, while they're waiting for their flights. Again, this is down, looking down on the concourse, kind of that open theme area with nice natural lighting. And we'll talk about it when we get to the, when we get to the video, but really want to make sure that people understand that in West Michigan are either coming to get on the plane to leave or flying in. Terms of future development, we're always looking towards the future. With the growth that we've experienced, we have to be in that position to stay in front of it. Our 20-year plan kind of looks like this. You can see the expansion of concourse A, kind of the center of the slide moving down. And then off to the left of that, in the future, would be another concourse C for future expansion, right there. And then two other projects that we're working on right now is the north parking structure. So because of our line-of-sight issues with the tower, our existing parking garage is as big as it can be. The next evolution of that is a parking garage just behind that, that north structure. And also, we're currently working with the rental cars out there to construct a new consolidated rental car facility in that east parking structure, or the east lot, if you know it today. That area then would be an area for all of the rental cars to have their vehicles both serviced, so they'll have fueling, washing, light service components taken care of there as well as having the vehicles ready and a customer service building. So we're working with the rental cars to work through the final details of what that needs to be and how we're going to be paying for that. This slide is just a nice aerial, give you some idea of some of the parcels that are available for development. We're working with a master developer right now in terms of what this should look like, what are the highest and best uses for these various parcels, what would roadway and other utility infrastructure look like to service those areas. And we're literally in the process of working with that, that group right now to help us identify what we can do with all of these various parcels. But it's about 900 acres of development. Of course, our focus is on how can we get it developed and a good compatible land use and put people to work in our community. I know there may be some questions and comments, and I'll be happy to either move forward to the, to the video or take those now.
You want to go ahead with the video and then we'll...
Yeah, great.
Awesome. Thank you.
So hopefully, you were able to see a little bit of the theming. So, you know, as you make your way from the lakes through the agricultural land of the state and then into city center, you kind of get that theme as you're working through the terminal. And we want to have concepts and themes throughout that really reflect that, so people have that sense of place when they're in our community.
All right. Ready for questions? Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wonderful presentation. Excited, Roger Morgan, about the airport board there. In our quest to be very modern and with technology, are we making sure that we're still going to have that personal touch, so when people come into Grand Rapids, they will see a human being?
Yes, we pride ourselves on being sort of that small hometown airport, even though we are growing and we have to expand the facilities to accommodate that. We pride ourselves, and our board is very focused on the guest experience, making sure that it's more of a guest experience, not just a, you know, walk-through and drive-through, if you will, and you don't get the attention. So we're looking at that. You saw some of the, kind of the amenities there that will be available for people that need to be able to do work, some of the technology that you can use for wayfinding and, you know, obviously getting through checkpoint and the baggage claim and the check-in process with the airlines. So we are focused on the guest experience. Thank you.
Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. Again, that's amazing. I remember probably too much information, but when the airport was, I don't know, about four or five planes, and it didn't have much of anything when I was younger. My question, though, is twofold. One is, I picked up a friend whose mom is in a wheelchair and helped her get all together, and they were waiting for luggage, 9:40, 9:45 in the, in the evening. Four flights came in, so that it was a lot of confusion as to where this baggage was going to go. Is that anything we have control over, or is that just, she asked me, I had no idea, and I thought I would ask her the, or find the answer for.
Oh, so we do have a little bit of control over it, but we work with the airlines. And unfortunately, right now, with all the construction, I said, we're right in the middle of disrupting everyone because we are right there in the baggage claim areas. Those have had construction walls put up around them, so depending on when you came in, some of them may not even have been visible or in operation. We are working with the airlines to get a better process down so that there's a little bit more of a standard expectation about where the bag should be.
Okay.
And relocating some technology there that will actually help the TSA and the airlines identify, you know, which flight is coming in next, which bag carousel will be available, and then actually working with apps so that you can actually find that on your phone. When you get off the plane, you'll know which bag claim to go to. So it's a great point. We have understood that, that challenge is there, and it's right now, it's even worse because of the construction, sort of the disruption that we've seen. But we are working with the airlines to help alleviate that for the future.
Yeah, it just, it was truly, even those who didn't need some extra help, were very confused as to which was where and what, because so many came in at the same time.
And we are what we call an O and D, or an origination destination airport. So what we're finding is, in the morning, the push of flights out is the same way. We've got so many bags, so many people, because we're pushing about 23 planes out between about 5:00 AM and 7:00 AM. So everybody's leaving at that time, at the same time. And then, as you mentioned, everybody's coming back at night around the same time. So we're having to figure out how to work with those peaks, and they're very large peaks as we grow and get more, more routes on our route map.
And one is a little more for, for Roger, as much I would like you to know, that I had a lot to do with the nonstop to Los Angeles. My daughter lives in Australia, and I only like to go up and down more, no more than two times. And so I have been after all the airlines. Can't you possibly get me from Grand Rapids to Los Angeles one time? And they listened, so there you go. Thank you very much for all you have done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. First, I want to commend the board on such a phenomenal find. So thank you, Tori, for applying, for coming. We are so glad you are here. As my neighbors will confirm during your presentation, although the thoughts were supposed to just be in my head, I said, wow, that's great, you know? That's beautiful. Just a great presentation, and I'm really excited for the future of the airport and glad you're here to help lead that. The other piece is welcome to Cannon Township, so I'm very glad to have you right around the corner as a neighbor. And the last question that I actually have for you is, there's some pieces of pure Michigan that currently is not getting funded by the state. Where do you feel that may or may not impact travel into the airport?
This is a great reason why having Doug Small appointed to our board will help, because he is really helping to bring that, that sort of business/tourism component to the board. It's hard to say. I mean, I think any, any negative impact will be felt probably years down the road. So I think it's going to be, you know, it'll be slow to realize what sort of impact that has. We certainly hope that it comes back because we can see it in our rental car market and others. We rely heavily on tourism, the airport, the community. We need to have the tourists here to do those things. And we can do everything we can from an asset standpoint, build it, have it ready to go. But you got to have the people that want to go and know what there is here to explore and how much fun they can have here. So we need to continue to get the word out.
Thank you.
And we are bringing about 2,500 folks here this summer with the ACI, or Airports Council International Conference, another way to kind of help spruce that up a little bit for the community.
Excellent. Commissioner Volkowski.
Thank you, Chair. First, to thank you for our ongoing partnership with Disciple Advocates, you and the whole team. Again, we're, we're there as you continue to invite us. That's great. With my commission hat on, though, the $400 million plus investment, how is that going to be funded? Just big bucket.
Yeah, so you're right, big bucket. So we are still working through the funding plans for each of the different projects within that program. But for instance, we expect the FAA to be a financial contributor for the Air Traffic Control Tower. We expect the Customs Border Protection to also be a financial contributor to our facility inspection, or FIS station. In addition, as we work with the rental cars, we have a customer facility charge or a CFC that is charged on rental transactions. Those funds coupled with ours will help build a new ConRAC facility. As we get to the terminal, we have a passenger facility charge that will also get coupled in some of the, I'll say, the airside components, the ramps and things like that. We get Airport Improvement Program, or AIP entitlement funding. And then, of course, we'll actually have to finance for some of this. So we'll get revenues off of, you know, the operations, but that's not enough to finance all of this. And so we'll back bonds with PFCs or CFCs. And obviously, we're looking to, you know, get the support from the county when we go and do that for some of these construction projects, probably starting, you know, in the first quarter here. Yep, but it's a complicated funding mechanism because they're, all have different eligibility strings that we have to work through. Great question.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. The Federal Inspection Station, will that allow us to get the enhancements on passports for travel type thing? Will that become like a customs-approved place for, I can't remember the official name on that?
So it won't be an enrollment center. It will be a facility that can process international passengers. So right now, we technically can't operate a large aircraft internationally. It's got to go through a point of entry somewhere else to process the people. We have customs out there for cargo, and we use that every day, but not enough staff and equipment to actually process 100 to 150 people on an airplane. That facility will be able to do that, but it won't be like a passport bureau or somewhere where you go and get your passport services done. That will still be done by, by Customs Border Protection at their other locations. And we just, we don't have the, the quantity, the volume of that type of need that they would support. that they would support, something like that.
Okay, thank you. Are you keeping track, what service area, how many counties are we the main airport for right now?
So we call it, yeah, we call it leakage or a catchment area. So we do monitor that. We're basically getting all of West Michigan, all the way over to Lansing. I just had a friend that texted me that was through here this last weekend. They were down in South Bend. That's where they're at. And they actually came up here for better fares and better service. So we have a very large catchment area. And as the airlines continue to put more routes in our market, we end up seeing more of those people coming for those new routes. So it is expanding. But it's pretty much all of West Michigan. And we get folks from the north, all the way over to Lansing and points east.
If I can ask a third question. We're getting more direct flights from like Allegiant, which you've announced recently. Is Delta doing more direct flights? I'm finding that more difficult.
So we continue to work with Delta. We actually have meetings with them periodically to talk about our market, what markets we would like to connect to based on a business need. We don't have any exact plans right now in terms of them wanting to add service. What I would continue to say to people is with new service that we offer, use it as often as we can because that tells the airlines that we want it, we need it, and we support it. And that will entice them to either extend the period that they're offering the service or even get it to another airline to get us more competition with it. So we really have sort of that use it or lose it philosophy as we approach air service. But we continue to work with all of our airlines to expand the route map based on what the business needs are for the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Steck?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Tori. Thank you so much for the presentation. So the airport is a critical part of the strength of our business community. Has there been, I know there has been in the past, but is there currently some conversation, some thought about public transit connectivity between the airport and our core business communities downtown?
You know, I'll have to take an IOU on that one. Being fairly new, I'm not familiar with the past conversations there, but we can certainly look into that.
Okay.
And actually, I've got my phone a friend here, Brian Picardi, the interim CEO and 30-year historian of the airport that might be able to answer some of these questions. But I'm not, I'm not sure, Commissioner. We could find out, though.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Antor?
Thanks, Chair. Good morning, Tori. I was wondering, do most of these airlines here have their own maintenance on-site? Or I think at one time, Allegiant, did they approximately go to my area?
So Allegiant has set up a base for aircraft and personnel here. And each airline does it a little bit different and depends on the level of maintenance. Lots of times in a community like Grand Rapids, they will outsource it. So you might find that some of the maintenance or some of the sign-offs, the logs that they need to do are actually done by somebody from the fixed base operation, like a signature or one of the other maintenance providers there. I'm not sure, though, if anybody's got maintenance people specifically stationed there, you know, full-time.
Is there something that's going to be expanded as well?
We're looking at that. So as we talk about all those development parcels, you know, we call it MRO or Maintenance Repair Overhaul. Those are one of the things that we'll be looking at as well. Yep.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Just think that, Chair, just to answer that question, we did have the airport at one time that did bus service for the downtown hotels and whatnot. And that didn't work out at that time, but probably something that needs to be revisited. So I'm looking into that.
Commissioner Womack?
Good morning, Mr. Richardson. Thank you for this great update on some of the things happening at the airport. Could you talk about some of the jobs that may be coming even temporarily during that expansion and maybe some of the local companies that may be involved or just how this is going to help us economically here with this great expansion?
Yeah, no, that's a great question, Commissioner. We pride ourselves on being an economic engine for the region. And so we know on an annual basis, it's about $3.1 billion of economic impact and about a little over 21,000 jobs that are supported. Each construction project will have its own set of jobs that comes with it. So, you know, for instance, we know with the FBO coming on, there'll be about 30 jobs that will be associated with that with a new company setting up shop here. Some of the other construction jobs will be over the life of the construction project. So when we talk about Project Elevate, that's about a two-year project. So we'll have construction workers, we'll have engineers, you know, we'll have electricians, all the trades there. Those folks will have jobs for during, you know, that period. But as you know, with airports, we are always under construction. So as we are finishing the construction in the terminal now, we'll be moving outside in the concourse A construction later this year, which will go for two years. At the same time, we're also doing a consolidated rental car facility out on the East lot. So the construction just moves around. So we know those jobs are there. It'll be a different contractor, subcontractors, engineers and so forth that do the work. But the bodies, the people will still be there to do the work for us. And we'll be employing them from our area.
Thank you very much, sir.
Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, a comment just on the previous questions around transit. I know that the company, Michigan Flyer, has operated a similar service on the east side of the state connecting DTW, Ann Arbor, the East Lansing area and the Lansing Airport. And I've gathered that that has supported both those airports' ability to attract passengers. And maybe there is a similar way that they could be partnered here to maybe not connect to other airports, but to connect to the other tourist locations, not just in downtown, but across the lake shore. My question is related to an update. Last year, we got an update on the AAF fire suppressant material, knowing that unfortunately, federal law still requires this substance to be used, but it does bring concerns regarding PFAS. Could you provide us an update on any federal changes to AAF and what the airport's doing to at least try to mitigate some of those circumstances?
Sure, Commissioner. And it's another good question. So we are good stewards of resources, all resources, whether they're natural, financial, or human or other. We pride ourselves on being a good neighbor in the community and a good part of the community. So we are taking that very seriously and we're acting responsibly. On a local level, we continue to do testing for monitoring the soils and the water in the area and places that we believe to have some contamination based on past uses. Also, at the local level, we are no longer discharging the AAF or aqueous film-forming foam, which is the suppressant we use for aircraft fires. We now have purchased a closed-loop testing facility for the equipment. We're required to use it by the FAA. We're required to test the calibration to ensure that it's set properly. In the past, that had to be discharged in order to test that. This new equipment, we can have it in a closed-loop environment. So we can actually test it without ever discharging it or wasting it or applying it elsewhere. And we can verify that we meet the regulations for that. At the federal level, we continue to work with the FAA. They have a two-year window to find a suitable replacement. But at this point, we are still regulated by the FAA that we have to use this because it is the most productive foam for aircraft fires. But the Department of Defense and the FAA and others are working and actually constructing testing labs and so forth to come up with a new alternative. At that point, once that's certified, I'm sure they'll be certifying manufacturers and then mass-producing this stuff for all the airports across the U.S. to get that. And that's probably a lengthy process to get enough quantity, you know, put out at all the airports. So we're working with them both at the federal level, but we're also working with the state and coordinating our efforts with theirs.
And if I may just clarify one point, when did that two-year window start and when is it ending?
I believe we're about just a few months into the two-year window. So I believe they are required by the end of 2021, or maybe September timeframe of 2021, to do that.
Perfect. And thank you for the very thorough response.
Thank you.
All right, last question. Commissioner Morgan?
This isn't the best for last, but his report was slightly better than my report. So I guess I'll concede that.
Better video.
And a video. Tori, can you just comment a little bit about our fee structure and where we do generate our money? Just very simply, we don't have a mileage supporting our airport. And if you don't fly out of the airport, you don't pay for it, correct?
Yeah, correct. So it's really based on a user fee system. So we work with each of the different providers. Our largest revenue source is our parking ground transportation. So people ask, you know, why don't you offer free parking or whatever? We pride ourselves on being able to have the funds to cover all of our expenses that are needed and the money to invest in the infrastructure investments that are needed. We get that basically through user fees. So if you use the garage, you pay a fee to park in there. We get money from that. If you are flying on an airline, you are paying a fee to utilize a facility, what we call a passenger facility charge. We get money for that. If you're using the roadway with an Uber or Lyft, we have a transaction fee that covers that because, again, we have to maintain those roads. We build those roads, we maintain those roads, we plow them, have to rebuild them. Those are the ways that we actually get money to pay for the infrastructure projects and the operations of them, if you will. But parking ground transportation's our largest. Then it's usually the airlines and then a mix from all the other concessionaires, folks that are paying us to be a place for them to do business and make profit.
A quick follow-up. And we're looking forward to the conference coming to Grand Rapids to show off the city and the region in West Michigan. So we are preparing for that. We're ready for that.
We are preparing for it. We're ready for it. We're in the planning stages of it. But as the Commissioner said, we have about 2,500 folks that are industry leaders in aviation and support providers and service providers, airlines, government officials, et cetera, that will all be descending on our city in the middle of September for about a week to see what we have to offer, to go through lots of conference sessions and meetings and things. So we're very proud to be able to showcase our community to basically our peers in the industry in aviation.
Great. Well, what a great presentation. I hope you felt welcome to Kent County because we certainly are excited to have you here. And thank you so much for all your hard work. Appreciate your presentation.
Glad to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. We are on to item six, public comment related to the agenda. Any public comment today on agenda items? All right, seeing none, we are on to item seven, consent agenda. And I'll call in Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan, support by Commissioner Vaughn. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Wooden?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Salfeld?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Bolkowski?
Yes.
Breavy?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to the back page of our agenda on resolutions. Resolution A, and I'll call in Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor this morning to move resolution number seven, the seventh resolution of the year, dated today, 1/23/20, and is from, to create the North County Campus in the 2020 CIP and appropriate funding and assign to Kent County Building Authority. It's from the Fiscal Services Department.
Great. Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on this resolution? All right, seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Talon.
Thank you. Sorry, I expected more comment, but I guess it happened at finance. I'm very supportive of this, have been since the inception. I also have spoken both verbally and in writing about the opportunity that this is to create a different way of approaching how our consumers can access services, the opportunity to be much more of a one-stop kind of shopping situation. And really want to encourage us as we develop the facilities plan that we're also planning for how we can do that work differently because it is a huge opportunity to do things differently than I think we have any time in the past in Kent County. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this? Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair. In my 18th year on the Finance Committee, it's really awesome to, this time, move these three projects and do it without bonding, that we've been able to create such a healthy financial position in our county because of the growth and the good things that are happening here. And it's really great to see these improvements and be able to move them on a cash basis.
Great. Commissioner Bolkowski?
Thank you, Chair. As you noted, there was plenty of conversation at finance. So my comments today, I know it's only about the North County now, but this comment's really about all three together. Thanks, staff, you know, Wayman and everybody else. Especially, you know, a lot of questions through the past many months. Thank our Finance Chair, Jones, for, again, shepherding these through with, again, plenty of time to kick the proverbial tires, ask those questions. So thank you for all that hard work.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Thank you, Chair. Wayman, I wonder if you can update or just inform us, especially the new commissioners, what happens next with, once this money is allocated as far as design and construction?
Once you approve, these projects then will be elevated. It will be the responsibility of the facilities management team to take these on and then begin to shepherd the process of identifying design organization, architectural firm, to solidify the plans and documents that will be used to go out for bid to construct the facility. It will be done through the process of the Kent County Building Authority in conjunction with them. So that will be the task once you approve.
So this really is the last time that we'll see this. If that's the case, then I just want to echo Commissioner Talon and make a pitch that one of the things that came out of the Ready by Five Proposal Review Board was really the need for space for some of the programs that'll be coming out of that. A lot of that space right now is KDL outlets, which are at full capacity. So just as we're designing this building, I think, as Commissioner Talon said, making sure we have the room for all of the things that the county does, including some of these new things like early childhood education.
Absolutely. There was quite a bit of conversation about that. Matthew Van Zetten, our Assistant Administrator, shared a lot about the planning of that facility. Al Giano talked about the fact that we've made the arrangements so that those organizations can come there, can do business out of that facility. And then, as we grow, the ability to expand on the site itself instead of just what we're locking down now. But for future growth, 20, 30, 40 years later from the county, that location on 17 Mile has the ability to expand itself, to grow, to accommodate the growth in the region.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sometimes in government, you have to be pretty patient. Remember, I think I was vice chair when we bought this parcel. I'm glad we didn't sell it. But it's a large enough footprint that we can move some of our services up there and create what I would consider to be the North County Complex or Annex and offer some of those services. So I'm glad to see this coming about finally. I think it's a good move and it's nice to see what was old at one time is new again. So thank you.
Commissioner Womack?
Yes, I just want to thank the staff for what they've done. As far as bringing us the information that was needed, they were able to really tell us a lot about the past. You were able to read through there and find out our history, our needs assessment on what's needed, where we are at the present and how this positions us in the future. So sometimes I had to reread it. You know, I had a few questions, but there were no questions that I couldn't find within the paperwork and the report. So I just want to thank the staff once again for a well-done job.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 1/23/27, Commissioners Wooden?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Talon?
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks?
Yes.
Skaggs?
Yes.
Salfeld?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Bolkowski?
Yes.
Breavy?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Madam Chair, there are 19 yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 1/23/27 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8B, and I will call again on Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Listen, I'm really excited to move Resolution Number Eight of today's date to create the Parks Office and Visitor Center project in the 2020 capital improvement and appropriate funding and assign to the Kent County Building Authority from Fiscal Services.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, again, support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution Eight? Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair. This one especially to me, we, what the Parks Department drew facility that were not the way I would love to display in Kent County. And thankful here, in my years of service, how we as a board and as a county have protected and improved
not the way I would love to display in Kent County and thankful here, in my years of service, how we as a board and as a county have protected and improved the quality of life in our area, which I think is such an important part of what our function is. And we can be very proud of our Parks Department and what we do. But now we need to, and we have stepped up and said, we need to have the right kind of office, the right kind of working environment for our associates, and then that we do what we can to make sure the quality of life continues to improve in Kent County. So I'm so excited to be able to vote yes on this resolution today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Antor?
Yeah, just wanted to agree with Commissioner Voorhees about the quality of life issues that comes with land use and so forth, and we're going down the right path as far as our parks, but I'd like to continue to encourage us to look out 100 years, make sure that we take real good care of all that dirt that's out there, because once you develop it, you're pretty much stuck with it. So we got to keep our eyes on the ball and make sure we do it in a way that takes all the different segments into consideration. Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering if the, if Wayman or someone could just comment again on the interplay or the relationship between the Visitor Center, which is not funded by the $2 million we're looking at here, and the approval for the rest of the project.
Matthew, want to come up and maybe give an answer to that question? I think you or Al would be good.
So the funding today is to build the office part, the visitor office part we're talking about? The Parks Foundation met this past week to talk about the $600,000 for the, what we anticipate the Visitor Center component, and they're working diligently to identify donors on that. That will then tell the story of Millennium Park in a way that guests could understand as well as other parks that we have in the county that they could learn about. If you remember, there's a trailhead there for the Kent Trails, and it's a spot where many of the Meyer Trails come in, and so it is a, that piece of property that we have there is a gateway to Millennium Park, but also a highly-used trailhead, so guests could come and learn about the rest of the park system and how to connect. So we're working with the Parks Foundation right now and anticipate to have news hopefully in the next month.
My follow-up, so, but they're not conditional. If we approve this, it isn't committed that we'll have the $600,000, but it is certainly the precedent to move forward with the $600,000.
And I would add to that, from my discussions with the staff and some of the potential donors to support this project, I would say that we're in a really good shape to move this forward. So we're, we're not 100% confident, but I would say we're in the 90 percentile and closely gaining momentum towards it getting done.
90 is pretty good.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 1/23/28, Commissioners Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 1/23/28 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8C, and I will call in Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I have the honor of moving Resolution Nine of today's date, the long-awaited opportunity to create the Fleet Facility Project in the 2020 CIP, appropriate funding, and assign to Kent County Building Authority from Fiscal Services.
Moved by Commissioner Breevy, support by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments on this issue? All right, seeing none, oh, I'm sorry. Carol, oh, I didn't see, you're behind the monitor with your arm, so, sorry.
That's okay. This is the third of the building projects that we're approving today, and some of these wait, go way back to when I first joined the board and we started allocating money and then got caught by a recession. But one project that was talked about then, and we had some money allocated for, is not coming up now, and I'm just curious if it still stands in the wings in any way, and that is the Medical Examiner Office.
Yes, the Medical Examiner's project, I don't know if that was a part of the decisions, but there was discussion at the time, Commissioner, and that is one of the projects that we are planning at some point to bring back, but it's not a part of the strategic capital fund that we had set aside for this year. But we are, and you might remember, we visited the University of Michigan, my alma mater, and for those of you who didn't know, along with Washington County three years ago, and we've met with Spectrum Hospital, we've met with our Medical Examiner, and that is on the skids for us to get back in the groove, to talk about, because the rates keep going up, and they've run out of space, and it's not at the level that we wanted. So that is on the radar.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question at finance, and from my perspective, I wanted to make sure that this, this facility is actually big enough to handle our needs, because being involved in the emergency medical services, I realize how important good maintenance and keeping your equipment in good shape is from a liability standpoint and all the other things. So I'm going to ask the question again. Is this facility big enough to suit our needs for the equipment we have?
We could have staff come up again and talk about that. Our Director for Facilities, Al Giano, is here, so.
Not that I didn't listen to you before, Al, I just.
I just really wanted to see you up here.
You just wanted to hear it again for assurance, or make sure in case something happened in the earlier video.
Sometimes you have to tell me twice.
You got me, you got me held accountable for that. Everything, everything we've done as far as research comparing our other facilities, input from our fleet manager team, everything says yes for now and for the future. 25 years from now, I can't predict that far, but you know, if we did need to add on a little bit, we always make sure when we, we make every effort when we do buildings to make sure to say, what if we needed to add something? What if our family grows bigger and we need to add something? So certainly we'll take that into consideration. I hear you loud and clear.
Okay, I'm just talking about the useful life of the building. I'm not asking for you to be Karnak and, you know, try and get the future, okay, Al? So yeah, the reason why I ask is, thanks, Al, for that.
Thank you.
You know, I have a brand-new ambulance sitting that's been sidelined for about a month and a half, waiting for radios. Radios. It was canceled three times. I had the appointment set up, and they just canceled it, and I'm sitting there thinking, I have this unit ready to go, and I can't get it on the road because I'm waiting for a plate that was supposed to have been ordered, you know, six months ago. So this is the kind of frustration you get into, and I don't want to see us not putting emergency vehicles on the road because we're waiting for a plate for a radio. So thank you.
Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. I try to make it a policy to avoid effusive praise during these periods, but I really want to thank Chair Bolter and Administrator Britt for their work on this project. I think this was an incredible process that we went through to get to these 19 to zero votes. Obviously, we had several work sessions, back and forths on email, and a lot of individual conversations that got us to this point. I think it's a wonderful model for us to go forward. I know that it's, it's time-consuming. I know that a lot of work went into that, but I think it's extraordinarily important as we move forward on additional building projects, that we keep up this model of as much as possible, putting in the hard work to build consensus as we move forward. So I'll look forward, as we all know from other work sessions and starting this process, that we, we're headed into, into more buildings with larger price tags, and I look forward to that work on behalf of the people of the county. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this resolution? Anyone hiding behind a monitor? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 1/23/29, Commissioners Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 1/23/29 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8D, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. It is my sincere, extreme pleasure to move forward Resolution 10, Ready by Five, Early Childhood Millage allocations for 2020 by the Administrator's Office.
Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on this issue? Commissioner Melton?
Thank you, Chair. I have a daughter, so to speak, who has lived with us off and on for years and years and years, and is now an eight-month-old. She has been a recipient of these home visits. I never thought that she would allow someone to come in to her home or apartment and give her advice, because she sure didn't take any of mine. I suppose, it depends on who it is, but I guess the serious part of this is the learning and the fact that she has grasped not only what is being taught, but is putting into play what is being taught, given that she had none of that in her own life growing up. I just, this is very, very exciting.
Great. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. I feel like I've been a broken record for a while, bringing up an issue that's probably the most important issue in the area that I represent in the county, and that's lead, and it's been lead, lead, what about lead? And so it's very exciting for me to see that part of this is allocating over three-quarters of a million dollars over the next, this year and next year for lead program expansion. So that helped a lot with my somewhat level of discomfort with the amount that we are investing in facilities, and very happy to see that. So thank you for, to the committee for recognizing that urgent need and including it in this recommendation.
Great. Commissioner Skaggs.
Okay, I'm going to break my policy again and thank a bunch of people, especially the voters, for approving this proposal. It's excited to continue this process that we've begun to get that money out to the children and caregivers. So thanks to those voters, parent, and then everyone who was on the Proposal Committee, Commissioner Sparks, our impacted community parents, experts, Sandra Golson-Jones from the county, and the First Staff Staff and Board. This has been a really rigorous process, a very informed process, and I think we've made some excellent decisions. As Commissioner Talon meant, mentioned, lots of money going into lead from this program on the Healthy Homes and Safe Homes bucket, heck, even more than they asked for, because this need is so great. So looking forward to the organizations that we're working with, including the Health Department. I don't know if Adam's here. I took my glasses off, so I can't see.
Teresa.
And the, lots of great stuff going on here, I think, especially, again, as Commissioner Melton mentioned, one example, that's the opportunity here with home visits and with play-and-learn communities to really reach parents from difficult-to-reach communities and make sure that they have the information to make them the best parents possible and to make sure that the resources that are available in this community are really being used to make sure that our kids are healthy and kindergarten-ready. So a lot of applause to everyone in this county for being such a leader on this issue. It is something that I know from the day job is being heard loud and clear in Lansing, and I think, again, this is an exciting time to see these funds get out into the field and out to help our children. Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I want to, I guess, just reinforce for the Commissioners, this is, this is a unique initiative by this county. This is not done anywhere else in the country, and so we are setting some new territory. We've created some new perspectives in dealing with these issues. So I want to acknowledge everybody that worked so hard to get us to this point and for starting this process off on a sound foot. So we're all looking forward to the impacts this can have on this community and to continue to monitor and look at the return that we get from this process. So I'm excited about finding out where we're going to go with this.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I just want to also echo my thanks to Commissioner Skaggs and Commissioner Sparks, because I know it's a very intense process, and it was new. So congratulations and thank you for all that time and effort and the whole Ready by Five Committee. So we're excited to see those results. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 1/23/10, Commissioners Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vaughn.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Salfeld.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 yes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 1/23/29 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8D, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. It is my sincere, extreme pleasure to move forward Resolution 10, Ready by Five, Early Childhood Millage allocations for 2020 by the Administrator's Office.
Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner Breevy. Questions or comments on this issue? Commissioner Melton?
Thank you, Chair. I have a daughter, so to speak, who has lived with us off and on for years and years and years, and is now an eight-month-old. She has been a recipient of these home visits. I never thought that she would allow someone to come in to her home or apartment and give her advice, because she sure didn't take any of mine. I suppose, it depends on who it is, but I guess the serious part of this is the learning
So I think getting more data kinda gives us a better idea of where some of those problems lie. We are seeing increasing numbers still of opioid overdose in our community, but, you know, there's, it's a, it's a complex problem. Pharmaceuticals is one aspect of that, and it is an area that we're very committed to see what we can do to bring that down.
And then Linda Howe, our attorney, has been working with attorneys state, as well as throughout the country around this topic, so maybe she can give an update as well in terms of our legal process for holding pharmaceuticals accountable.
Our claim on behalf of Kent County was filed in the main lawsuit that is being handled out of the federal court in Ohio. That's where all these cases are being pulled together. There's about twenty-three hundred cases that have been filed, and this does not include the most recent case filed by the State Attorney General here in Michigan. She's going on a slightly different tack. The cases in Ohio are moving through the system. We have proposals and a negotiating team representing all the municipalities, working on formulas based on everything from per capita to pharmaceutical spending, and trying to come up with a way of dealing with it. But as you can imagine, with that many claims, the most comparable history is the tobacco litigation. We all know how long that took. I can't give you any type of date as to when you can expect a resolution on that, but it is actually making forward progress in the court in Ohio that was tasked by the federal court system. Take a look at this.
Any other questions or comments on this resolution? All right, this is not a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, resolution passes. We are on to eight F, and I will call on Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to move Resolution twelve of today's date for the Grand Rapids Individual Circuit Breaker Program for KCCA additional appropriation, Kent County Community Action.
Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner Melton. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. Kind of a technical question, I was looking at the second whereas in the resolution, and it talks about, you know, community action grants from, and the first one listed is called in all capitals, Kent County Support. That's something I've never heard of before, wondering what that is. Is that general fund dollars? What does Kent County Support mean?
Can I have Matthew or Chad from Community Action Agency come up and answer that?
Yeah. Kent County Community Support is, for years, Kent County provided $65,000 to asset for community action services. So when the merger happened, those $65,000 now go to Kent County Community Action.
That's basically general fund?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna make sure that people that may be watching understand what that program is, especially in this time, a season. It's financial assistance to the households within Kent County who are customers of the Grand Rapids Water Service, and they have received notification of disconnection and the other program requirements.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is not a roll call vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. We are on to Resolution G, and I will call on Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move adoption of Resolution thirteen of today's date to authorize a home investment partnership agreement between Kent County and Link Up to construct six new homes.
Moved by Commissioner Woodin, support by Commissioner Melton. Questions or comments? Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just stated this in finance, and I would like to state it here to be fully transparent. My, while my organization has in the past worked in joint ventures with, the organization I work for professionally has formed joint ventures in the past with this organization, Link Up. It is not on this project. There, I don't have a conflict of interest, but felt the need to be transparent on that matter. Additionally, I also just wanted to reiterate my hope that over the next few weeks, we can get a report from Kent County Community Action to disclose how many of our home-assisted and federally-assisted homeownership projects in the last ten years have remained owned by the original buyer. The reason I ask it is because, under the federal guidelines, the affordability restrictions on these assisted housing units burn off after five years. And as we've seen in the city of Grand Rapids, often because these projects are of public record, once the affordability restrictions burn off, they become targets of investors who try to acquire them at a low cost and then flip them as rentals. And so I would love to get the data on that, so that as we're having our affordability discussions, we can examine other ways we can preserve the taxpayer dollars that go into funding initiatives like this, so we can preserve the affordability for the long term.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I know that these three-bedroom homes, however many there are, I think it says on here somewhere, aren't a multitude. I really am, I am glad that we are looking forward to how to deal with our, our housing problems with persons who cannot afford housing. And I have a couple of friends who live, sister-in-laws who live in the California, San Francisco area, and they are now putting billions of dollars into how to combat the homeless population. The cities are just rife with it, because they did not have that foresight to look ahead. What are they going to do when persons truly cannot afford to live somewhere? So this is really very exciting for me to think that we, as a county, are truly looking forward, thinking as opposed to just waiting until that happens. So thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution one twenty-three twenty-thirteen, Commissioners Woodin.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Vonck.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Saulfeld.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Polkowski.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have nineteen yeas, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution one twenty-three twenty-thirteen is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Onto our last resolution, and I will call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. It's my honor to move Resolution number fourteen of today's date. It's from the Regional Community Development Planning Memo of Understanding for the Kent County Community Action.
Moved by Commissioner Voorhees, support by Commissioner Woodin. Questions or comments on this resolution? All right, seeing none, this is not a roll, oh, Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was only going to restate my appreciation of staff, that we are going to be doing this with, with the city of Grand Rapids. It will allow us to both save some money and also permit us to examine at an even more regional level how we can remove barriers to get folks housed in this county. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, this is not a roll call. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, resolution passes. We are on to the second page of our agenda, item nine, public comment related to any county matter. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to come address the board today? All right, seeing none, we are on to ten, Commissioner Reports. Who has a report? Commissioner Morgan.
Very short report on the airport. Just to remind the board, the reason that I asked about our fees and our revenue structure at the airport is, we're gonna be coming really soon, or real soon, probably in the first quarter, with our bond request, and I think that's gonna be totaling about $145 million, so, to do some of the infrastructure out of the airport that we were talking about. So I just wanted to let everybody know that.
All right. Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just have an update from the Sustainable Business Park Work Group, and there's been a lot of information that's been going on behind the scenes. There's been a lot of site coordination going on. Consumers Energy and DTE have been involved in conversations as far as what the need is for utilities and the availability, and also working with the Alleghen County and Kent County Road Commissions and MDOT, working on infrastructure and talking about all-season roads. So there's lots of work that needs to get done, lots of site prep, before this project, you know, continues to move down the road. In the second quarter, we're hoping to issue an RFP to look for some anchor tenants, an anchor tenant, or maybe more. But we're hoping to get a pretty good response. We had a great response when we did a request for information, like a year, year and a half ago. So we're gonna include those organizations plus additional ones. And then we're hoping by the end of 2020 to have that anchor tenant set, and to know what their needs are, and to continue to move this project along, so.
Great. Thanks. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. So I have two reports. I'm gonna start with the Kent County Parks Foundation, and a few highlights, plans are underway for Board of Commissioners' park tour, similar to one that was conducted last year. Be on the lookout for a Save the Date card soon. We also are looking at finding additional niches for donors, including looking at an event that we're currently titling Beer City Supports Parks Events. So just something that would help reach out to maybe a different group than those who've been attending our events. I also want to make a note that we passed our budget, so I'm going to leave this on the back table for anybody who wants to peruse it. If you have any questions, you can let me know. So that wraps up Kent County Parks Foundation. The next, next piece I'm also assigned to is Experience Grand Rapids. And as we noted, one of the big topics was on Pure Michigan, so I just wanna take a moment and quote from Doug Small. He said, "A decade ago, Michigan's economy was at the bottom. Pure Michigan sent a positive message across the country." I real, this is Doug Small saying, "I realized at a point, it was not just about visitors. It was about Michigan's message to the world. Pure Michigan is promoting the state as a great place in hopes that people will live, work, and play here. The campaign's become an economic development tool, and others benefit beyond tourism." He said that if state government were a business, Pure Michigan is essentially the marketing arm of the state. He's never seen a successful business without an aggressive marketing department. So I thought I would just toss that into the mix, along with one note, that toast to the town is April 30th. We also had a report on statement and income, and I'm gonna leave this also with the Parks' financial report on the back table. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Vonck.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanna piggyback on what Roger said. Just about a dozen years ago, we didn't have the capacity to bring in conventions from out of state like we do today, like our director just mentioned. I had talked to Northwest back then, and they had one extra plane in the area, and how things have changed since we got the low-cost carriers. And on top of that, we talked about transportation to the downtown hotels and whatnot earlier, and I just wanna add some other thoughts on that. Put a number in your head, how many Uber pickups do you think happen per hour during peak periods? I was amazed. There are in the hundreds of pickups per hour at our airport. And so a new generation like my daughter, Uber, 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 Lyft, 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 and I was probably the old generation with the airporter and jetporter and whatever else they had, and there probably is a place for them as well, and our taxi service has just dwindled to just about nothing, so. But we still have that in place for those that need it. So just how things have changed, just in the short period of 12 years, so, thank you.
Commissioner Polkowski.
The Front of the Court Advisory Committee met last Monday. We can have go. We continue to, you know, monitor the, the work of the Front of the Court and the impact they're having, so it's all there on the Front of the Court website. And also, as a follow-up, for those who are around a couple, three years ago, when a group of community members came forward to work on a solution related to warrant enforcement, Commissioner Lanier, who was the co-chair of that with me, suggested we bring, bring the band back together. So Wayman and our Front of the Court, Dan Fotick, have been working on bringing everybody back together to get a more formal report. I mean, we get the reports from the Front of the Court about that work, however, bringing everybody back together, and that will be hosted by the Chair of the Front of the Court Advisory Committee. So it's, I don't wanna say putting cart back in front of the horse, or horse, whatever that is. So, so look forward to that invitation for that larger group meeting. At least Commissioner Voorhees and I will be invited, since he served on that task force with me a couple of years ago.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Every day I'm being asked what's going on at the zoo. It looks a little bit muddy right now. And Commissioner Voorhees and I are your appointees to the zoo board, and the, we're working with the city to handle stormwater. The zoo is built with two hills and comes down a little bit, and then it goes, and then it goes up again. So we're working to handle stormwater, to clean it up a little bit, to put it into the pond, which may help to take care of some of the algae problems that appear in the spring at the pond. There also will be a part of creating an entryway that will be more handicapped accessible. It will be more winding as you get in. It'll have, eventually have exhibits around it as you travel through this more winding path. But we've been working also with disability advocates to make sure that the zoo, which is built on hills, can be accessible to people. And so it, things in progress look a little rough. I know even last night I was asked about it, but it will be beautiful, and it's a part of a major, we approved several years ago, a strategic plan for the zoo, and this is a part of the entire strategic plan as it was approved by this board.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Two short reports. First, some of you are aware that there is a Crisis Center Task Force that has been meeting for several years, actually, three years now. It is, it met again this week for purposes of first revising our thought as being a crisis system task force, to resonate more with some of the initiatives that are going on with the county, and also to provide technical support and experienced support for the initiatives that the county Health Department is now taking on in that effort, along with the consortium here. So it is, it's a great group. It has a lot of experience on the ground with respect to the crisis issues that we need to deal with in this county, and, and we look forward to continuing to be support for that effort. The second report, having to do with Lake Shore Regional Entity, it wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't say something about it. So we continue our negotiations with the state to see if we can reach a resolution as to covering the operating deficits that are experienced across this region. Those still need to be addressed in order to stabilize our system. We continue to be hopeful, but no deal yet. We keep negotiating.
Great. Any other official? Commissioner Woodin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to report that earlier this month, both the Policy and Technical Committees of the Grand Valley Metro Council met to approve the drafted 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which prioritizes how both local, state, and federal funds are spent in certain areas. Was glad to see that there was a focus on balance between motorized, non-motorized, joint-motorized transportation, and above all, safety and congestion management. And I also believe if it was not his last meeting, it was one of his last meetings for Abad Etani, who is retiring. And that concludes my report.
Great. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to note that last week, the Governor's Task Force on Jail and Pre-Trial issued its final report. A lot of good recommendations that affect the county potentially, but recommendations that need to work their way through the legislature. So there's probably a good three to six months of additional work that needs to happen to make sure that those recommendations actually happen. I will make sure that a link gets sent to all of my colleagues to the report, and feel free to let me know if you have questions or concerns, or want to help out in making those things happen in some way.
Great. Any other official reports? All right, seeing none, we are on to Commissioner miscellaneous. Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. I am thrilled to report that the East Grand, or, East Grand Rapids, East, East Cowood, because we, we actually did beat East Grand Rapids, that we, the people team, finished second in the state. They are in the running to be potential national finalists. But really, what struck me, and I just can't imagine that it would not be quite impressive to most anybody who reads about this, our members combined to speak seven languages. Three team members were born in another country, and six members are the first, are the children of a first child immigration parent. So you put that together, and you really think about this, this is a team that went to the state, finished second, and with those kind of statistics, it just tells you that, you know, we are still in good hands. There are so many young persons who take a huge, huge interest in our country and what goes on. So I just think that's very, very exciting. And we did beat East Grand Rapids.
They're recruiting with internationals as opposed to East Grand Rapids.
Yeah, internal, yeah, yeah, exactly. They're not messing around. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Those in our community who celebrate the Lunar New Year, I wanna wish everybody a fun weekend and a Happy New Year.
Great. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Going up and down the agenda today, there was a lot of talk about the unique and innovative things that we're doing and how we're expanding services, and I'm all behind that, 100 percent. So leading in, that will lead into these comments. This past Monday, I had an opportunity to go to the MLK Breakfast that was hosted by the Urban League. I wanna thank them for doing that. All five speakers were outstanding. I think the way that the whole breakfast was set up was innovative and thought-provoking. The only comment I want to make is that one speaker that spoke, the CEO of Dwelling Place, had some very pointed comments towards Kent County and where we stand on affordable housing, trusting the issue of homelessness. And I hope the staff will reach out. I don't think that the comments should just be made and then no response from us. And I hope the staff will reach out. I don't think that the comments should just be made and then no response from us. You know, we are partners with a lot of people in the community, and the people that are in the homeless and the affordable housing sector don't feel that we're really a partner anymore, and I think that needs to be addressed.
Great. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. So, also, as a liaison member to the Convention and Arena Authority, just kudos to our Broadway Grand Rapids that now has Hamilton across the street. So, for those of you who haven't seen it but want to see it, I'm one of those, and I love putting my money right here locally in our community. I didn't go to Chicago to see it, and I'm thrilled that it's here. So, I just thought I'd make a note of that, too.
Great. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just piggybacking off of Commissioner Coleman, there are two Lunar New Year festivals happening in town this weekend, at 555 Monroe on Saturday from 5 until 9, the Grand Rapids Asian Pacific Festival is hosting, and Team Grand Rapids and Downtown Grand Rapids, Inc. So, that's a festival that everyone is welcome to join, and also Mr. Philip Nguyen of the Vietnamese-American community, they are actually having an event as well, and their event will be held at the Knights of Columbus there in Wyoming on Saturday, starting from 4 and going till 6:30 PM, and everyone is welcome.
Great. Commissioner Talon.
Thank you, Chair. We at Kent County pride ourselves on being thorough and methodical in our work, and I just want to comment that I had a little bit of frustration with the short interval of time between our Finance Committee and those items going to the board. I looked back at the Finance Committee on Tuesday, and every single item on there came to the board today. I was not able to attend the meeting on Tuesday morning. I looked right up until last night for video, no minutes, so wasn't really able to see the discussion that happened and use that as background for decisions today. So, you know, our process generally has been that we have a weak interval or more in between a Standing Committee meeting and the board, and want to encourage us to do that because it does affect some of the members who are not on those Standing Committees. Thank you.
Commissioner Salfeld.
Thank you, Chair. We've had some long meetings here in the past, especially that, I think it was 2018. But I just wanted to make sure you all saw another deliberative body had a really long meeting or two this week, the U.S. Senate. And I was just going to say, as the former Chair of the Rules Committee, if you ever don't like our rules, I don't know if you guys saw it, but the Senate does not allow anything but water or milk to be at the desk. No food, no water, no coffee, nothing else. So, if you don't like the rules, it could be worse.
Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair. As it was noted throughout, or at various times in the meeting about accessibility and all of that, I do want to point out two quick things, that the zoo and its work actually is not complying with the ADA. It's greatly exceeding it with universal design and slopes that it's, yeah, that was the setup. So, again, it's looking at, as we like to say, only slightly sarcastically, the ADA is the worst you can legally do, and the zoo continues to go above and beyond, our parks putting in family restrooms. Again, things, these are not required. However, they are greatly appreciated by families and folks of all abilities. That being said, not to rest on our laurels, on April 21st, Across the Street is going to be our second annual Absolutely Accessible Kent event, and we're bringing in Chris Downey. He's an architect who became blind. He was featured on 60 Minutes last summer, and he talked about how his blindness has made him a better architect. So, April 21st, Across the Street in the morning, I'll send details through Pam, but, and scholarships are available.
Great. Any other miscellaneous today?
All right, I have a couple of housekeeping things. We had a very, I thought, informative Executive Committee meeting this morning. We got through a lot of issues, Lead Action Task Force, Housing Availability, PDR, TDR, PPA 116, Facility and Infrastructure Update, Lake Shore Regional Entity and Community Health Issues, and a land bank update. So, Pam is going to be sending out those notes at some point. I do want to encourage you, though, there are times when we do have Executive Committee that you're all welcome, of course, and we did rattle through a lot of issues today. So, just want to expand on one of those pieces, the Lead Action Task Force. We've talked about that a little bit. Mayor Bliss and I are working together with, so the county and the city are going to be working together to kind of convene kind of all aspects of all the lead resources we have in this community to try to weave it all together and get some sort of additional action plan moving forward. The city is working on a couple of pieces that they would like to finalize in the middle of February, and then we will be proceeding with that, so stay tuned on that. Also, wanted to let you know, I was asked to, with Mayor Bliss, to co-chair a K-Connect Housing Security Group, so I will be working with her on that, and the county will be leaning in on additional housing in that capacity as well. Also, want to talk about, we will be having a board retreat on February 27th, so Save the Date. We have a commission meeting, and then, as I said, the Executive Committee, I started listing all the things we needed to talk at the board retreat, and it's a pretty long list, so you might want to plan accordingly, but also want to encourage you to bring your ideas for the year. It's kind of going to be our way to kind of map out and create an outline of issues we're going to kind of try to tackle this year. Please bring your ideas, please bring your questions, and plan on settling in for a potentially long but hopefully productive board retreat. And then lastly, I want to thank a couple people. I obviously want to thank the staff and the Fiscal Services staff especially for helping us find a way to allocate our resources so well that we could pay for projects that need to get done without bonding and make sure they bubbled up to a priority, but that we all were able to work together and get that done. And I want to thank Wayman's staff for answering all the questions, and Fiscal Services staff and Al for all his work. But I also want to thank the veteran board members that we have on this committee, looking at you guys, because a lot of us newer members don't have that point of reference of what happened 10 years ago and so many years ago, and we needed to hear that you guys put these projects, we had to because of that economy, put those off, and there's still a need there, and it was just really good for me to have that, be able to contact you all and get that base of support and level of information. So, I want to thank our members who have been serving longer than the rest of us for that. So, with that, I will call on Commissioner Morgan for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Melton.
Oh, no, no, move to adjourn. No, 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 really.
I'm sorry, I think, I think that we did sort of miss something, and that is that we have someone in our audience right now who is of great, great importance because she has just been nominated for one of the 50 Most Influential Women in West Michigan, and that is our own sheriff. So, congratulations.
I don't want to adjourn now. We're all going to sit here.
Another half hour.
Move to adjourn, subject to the call of Chair to February 13th for a 6 o'clock meeting.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan, support by Commissioner Wooden. We are adjourned.
I am Kent County. We are 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 Kent County.